Testing. Just testing.
Okay, at this time, we will call this meeting to order. Hold on, we're letting tactical catch up. Good. And they've caught up. May I have a roll call, please?
Sessie Trechell.
Here.
Sessie Pfeifer.
Here.
Sessie Waschleger.
Here.
Sessie Connor.
Here.
Sessie Halquist.
Here.
President Vandersteele.
Here. If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we're going to have the swearing in of Shontae DeBoer. She will be filling the seat and was approved by the village board that was left by Michael Myers in his passing. Yes, yes. Could you please raise your right hand? I, Shontae DeBoer.
I, Shontae DeBoer.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations, trustee DeBoer. The trustee DeBoer had served time on the park board for quite some time, also was a local business owner for I don't know how many years, quite a few, and has been quite involved in the community and the schools. So with that, we welcome her and look forward to the future and working together. At this time, we have public comments for anybody that would want to speak, please step towards the podium. Please step towards the podium.
Again, I'm not shy, I just don't have your signature.
That's okay, you can just say your name and address.
Okay, Dawn Buikas, 67 Windsor Circle, Heartland, Wisconsin, 53029. I came to ask about my deer. Did anybody call the DNR and how do I follow up and find out and if they want to use my house for a blind, they most certainly can? Or set traps or how do I follow up on this?
You can call the village or you can call the police department, we are looking at the options that we have in the village.
Okay, because you had assured me that you would have somebody call.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just.
We are looking at all options that are available in a village of 10,000 people, which makes it somewhat difficult. We don't have the answer yet. Not in the last two weeks, we have not got the answer.
That just means I have one deer for every thousand people in our village.
Could be.
In my yard.
Could be. It doesn't change what the law is on whether or not, how we.
Absolutely, but they're not even talking to me, so I'm thinking.
Yep, if you do want to, if you want to call. You can either leave your number.
Da'Choy and I, I'll get you all involved.
You can leave your number or your email, or you can contact police department, or you can contact the village. And you can ask for our village manager and we will get you any answers that you want and let you know what remedies we may have available.
Okay, so no one's going to volunteer to call the DNR?
I'm not saying we didn't call the DNR, I'm saying we don't have an answer yet.
Oh, who did call?
I have no idea. I don't know who called.
Government in action. Okay, I'll be back.
Anybody else for public comments? Okay. For the first item of our agenda, we have consideration of the village board minutes from the September 26th meeting. Also move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the village board minutes from the September 26, 2022 meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is consideration of items related to vouchers. This is, this is consideration of contractors' application for payment number two for the 2022 paving program to Payne and Dolan Inc. in the amount of $221,463.83.
This payment voucher is for the budgeted 2022 paving schedule. Included in here is the Maryhill subdivision, Tenney Woodlands subdivision, Imperial and Dundee, and also the Village Hall parking lot. We will hold a retainage for one year for warranty work, the retainage will be $26,224.32. Staff recommends the second payment to Payne and Dolan Incorporated for the sum of $221,463.83.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the payment to Payne and Dolan for $221,463.83 for the paving program. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Then we have consideration of vouchers for payment in the amount of $818,056.3.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of $818,056.3.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers. Any discussion?
I do have a question for Mr. Faulkner.
One second, one second. Did you make the motion and second it? She seconded it, she.
No, I made the motion.
I second. Go ahead.
I have a question, first for the ambulance. Stryker Sales Corporation yearly maintenance agreement was $3,060, what do we get for that? What do they do?
It's for both of our monitors, so the cardiac monitors that we use.
Okay.
So they come in and maintain them every year, replace things.
What does that mean?
They check them out, calibrate them, everything needs to be calibrated. So the blood pressure cuff, the O2 sensor, the 12 and 4 lead section of that monitor. So they come in once a year, do all the maintenance on it, make sure everything is working right, and then repair anything that needs to be repaired.
Do you happen to know off the top of your head, is this amount pretty close to what it was last year?
It's the same amount, it's a three-year contract.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
And I think this is the second year of it, yes.
Okay. My next question, question is for law enforcement. I see for an officer for cargo pocket pants, we paid $277.19. Is that for one pair of pants?
I'm sorry, what was the bill?
For cargo pocket pants, it's $277.19, is that for one pair of pants?
It's not for one pair, I don't know how many that is, it's either three or four.
Oh, okay.
For every new officer, we buy four sets of pants and we hired Officer Martins for the recruit academy.
This is for, it says, oh, okay, gotcha.
And then he purchased those, those pants for his, either his recruit uniform or his duty uniform, not having the exact voucher, I'm not sure which one it's for.
It's for GALL, it says.
Yeah, then it's his duty uniform and it could either be three sets of pants similar to what Lieutenant DeBarge is wearing right now. And those are probably about 80 bucks a piece.
Oh, and that's fine, I just was wondering why it was 277 for one pair. I just kind of, it stood out to me. Okay, I'm done, thank you. I'm done.
Sessie Trechell.
I have a question for Mr. Faulkner. The HydroCorp service fee for September, what, what's that related to?
So HydroCorp, they do our cross connection. What they do is go around the businesses and look for cross connections, so there's nothing that's, they're a chemical place, so the chemicals can't get back into our water system if there's a main break. We do that, we do it quarterly, and they'll go around and hit every business in the village of Heartland and schools.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Any other discussion? I will call the question, all in favor of paying the vouchers?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. I was an aye, I forgot to say aye, but I was an aye. Actions related to licenses and permits, we have consideration of bartender's operator's licenses. The, the police chief is recommending approval and the, this, the applicants have gone through the responsible beverage service course.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bartender operator licenses for the two applicants.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the operator's bartender's license for Rebecca Fuchs and Sanders Faunt.
Can I have discussion?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, so if our policy says 12 months, correct? Okay, and there's some discrepancy on the, either the 12 months of reporting or 12 months the conviction was? So if, if it's less than 12 months, are we going to set precedent to, to have to individually look at each one of these now?
Heard it, Chief.
Write a memo on this fact, I just always want the board to make informed decisions. This is one that was applied for back in May. We were definitely within that 12-year mark for an underage drinking violation. So that board policy, it's right on the application, is that 12-month time period, and we relayed that message at that time. Mr. Faunt has now resubmitted and we're right at about the 12-mark, a month mark, and it depends how you look at it. Data violation was August, data conviction was October, so I just wanted the board to have an informed decision. And we're just slightly within the date of conviction, but literally if this would come to the next board meeting, he'd be without, outside that 12-month period. I just wanted the board to understand there was a violation that would be relatable, but under these circumstances, in my opinion, through looking through his criminal history, I would recommend approval, but you do have options and just wanted to make sure you had the information to make that informed decision as a board.
Thank you.
What does it state, or is it our interpretation of 12 months? It's not definitive.
Correct. It just says 12 months from a violation. Is that data violation or is that data conviction? I would guess maybe assume violation, but, because conviction can be strung out over sometimes months if not into the year mark, so then how do you look at that? So it's definitely a couple of different ways of looking at it.
Chief, just to be clear, is your, is your recommendation that we would approve it?
Correct, this is the only thing I saw that was of concern, and if it's okay with the board and it's their policy, your policy for that 12-month mark and it's the one violation, I would say it aligns with your policy, even if it's taken from data conviction, literally if this would get tabled to the next month, now we're just playing the waiting game. I would say we're in appropriate timeframe and I would recommend approval with, with the totality of his circumstances. And I believe he's here as well, I don't know if there's any questions for him directly.
I do think insurance companies, if I'm remembering correctly, they do go from the date of conviction, not from the date it happened.
A lot of times, things are looked at from data conviction because of.
Right.
The court process, that's why I wanted to bring it to the attention of the board.
I do remember many years ago, prior to President Vandersteele, that anybody who was even within a day short of a year, they got denied, they were denied. But again.
Is that based on data conviction or date of incident?
I don't remember, to be honest, but I know it was within 12, if anything, within 12 months exactly, they just said, no, we can't do it, don't. But I do believe, like I said, I believe insurance companies go from date of conviction because you're innocent until proven guilty.
Do we have anybody else, I guess I'm just gonna, I mean, I don't, and obviously I'm going to go with the chief's recommendation because we're within, I believe, what, 12 days? 10 days of it being the two-year mark, so.
So October 20th would be the date of conviction, and then obviously our next board meeting, I believe, is the 24th, if I remember.
If we were gonna, if we were gonna approve anyways, I just feel, if, I can't answer for anyone else, but like myself, if I know that in, in two weeks, based on chief's recommendation, pending something doesn't happen, I'm going to approve it. Why say no just because of that? I think there's also a big difference between whether this was an OWI where you blow point two, or whether you have an underage drinking ticket, there's various, you know, or, you know, hitting something in a vehicle, I think there's variances there. And also for me, I know that anytime someone's in jail or being held because of a serious crime, which this isn't what we would consider a serious crime, not a good one, not a good smart choice, but I do know that if you're serving, they do typically, and almost always, give you time served, so. For me, I'd go from the date of the, being pulled over. And I only say that because of the. Yeah, we have a motion. I, I only say that simply because we're just within the 10 days. Just my opinion. I don't have anything else, does anybody else have any discussion?
I, I do tend to feel the same way, I feel if it was a more serious incident, that the conviction was more pressing and we, he wasn't, found drinking underage is a pretty obvious thing that you're caught doing. I feel like he was in trouble from the minute he got caught and he served his 12 months plus. To me, it's based again on chief's recommendation, I think it makes sense, but.
Well, mainly, the only reason why I brought it up is I don't have an issue with this, but my issue is the next one might be 10 months, and the next one might be nine months, and then that's going to put, you know, the onus on us to make that decision.
Right.
Yeah.
I do agree with you that I would not want to go that direction, just my, my opinion.
Well, I mean, but we're going on his recommendation though, too, so.
We're going off of that recommendation, but we're also going on the fact that, you know, we won't have a board meeting for a while, where if we're most likely going to approve anyways, it's like, okay. So I look at the semantics of, we're in a, what, 14-day window?
Yep.
Go ahead.
And if you do notice, this was originally submitted on May 9th, and we reviewed it at that time, and we wrote the memo that's in quotes and italicized, and at that time, they pulled the permit process back and then resubmitted at that 12-month mark. And again, we're, now we're talking some days here, a little bit. If, if you're going to approve it based off the violation at the next board meeting, that's why I say, instead of playing the waiting game, we would, I would just recommend approving here.
Sure. Anybody have anything else? We do have a motion and a second on the floor, so I'm going to call the question on whether to approve or not. This is for both, keep in mind. If someone wants them separated out, please do so now. The motion, just so everybody knows, is for both names, if someone wants to make an amendment, now would be the time to do it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have on the agenda is discussion and considerations of a conceptual plan for development of a multi-use building at 221 Cottonwood Avenue. Gentlemen?
Hi, my name is James Cupfer, and I think you know Chris Miller. We have proposed, been working on a building at the corner of, of Park Avenue and Cottonwood. It's a mixed-use building. Be four stories tall with underground parking. The first floor would be a rental commercial space, that would be the entrance on Park Avenue. Then on the entrance on Cottonwood would be the entrance for floors two, three, and four. And then in the back of the building, which I'm calling the back of the building opposite of Cottonwood, there would be an event space on the first floor that is, that you get to it through the hotel space. The second floor is a boutique hotel, 23 rooms, mostly king suites, large rooms. Average hotel room is 300 square feet, these would be in the 450 range. They'd all have a king suite with a separated bedroom and also would have then a living area and a small kitchenette, so they would also be king suites that are extended stay. Floors three and four, pretty simple, there are 26 apartments, 13 on each floor. There would be underground parking, the underground parking is enough to, to handle the apartments. We would have 14 spaces out front, I think it is, on angle parking on the Park Avenue side, which would handle the hotel rooms, and we would have some spillover at night into the municipal lot next door to the north. Then the last part of this is the event space. Typical weddings, it's like 95% are under 200 people. The average wedding is somewhere between 125 and 150. So a 150-person wedding would need 75 parking spaces. I had did a survey of the parking in the area. I did it two times in a day. I did it, I think it was 2 o'clock in the afternoon on a Saturday, and then again, right at this time, between 6:00 and 7:00. The thing that's funny today is I come off of 16 and through town, there's more people parked downtown on Tuesday than there was that Saturday, that particular Saturday, I don't know if that's normal, I don't understand that, but there was maybe in those parking spaces at 2:00, and of those parking spaces, there's three, 231. So 231 parking spaces within less than two blocks or a five-minute walk to this building. So it's 231 spots, at 2:00, there was 40 that were occupied. At 6:30 again, when I came back, it was the same, it was 40 occupied, but it was a different. Most of the parking during 2:00 in the afternoon was right behind City Hall with the library, very little downtown and almost nothing on Cottonwood. And nothing at our extended, the very end of ours, which would be that Pauling, not your real, right, Pauling. Then I came back at 6:30 and there was nobody parked at the library, but then there was probably 40 cars in the downtown area at that time. Not compared to today, though, because I don't understand that, because it was, there wasn't a parking space downtown today. Came through right at, right at like 6:25. So that's our project, I know a lot of these things have a lot of questions, so if you do have any questions, just fire away. We'll answer them, or try.
Just to make it so that you guys know, because I don't think you got a briefing, but tonight too, and for the board also, especially we have some members that may not have gone through a big one like this, you know, it's conceptual, so the decision here is not to figure the whole project out.
Correct.
But to get the airplane.
So you know what we're, what we're thinking.
Oh, no, no, I'm just letting you guys know also, it's not, you know, we'll.
I understand, I've been through this.
Yep, yeah.
A few times.
I just tried to keep everybody on the same page.
Kind of based off of that, just to give everyone a background, projects back in the village used to just go through the planning commission and would come up to the village board after everything's been hammered out. The village board started this many years ago so that it was out in the public, the public is aware of a project of this nature. So again, tonight, all you, the village board would be doing would be is sending this to the planning commission for their concept plan review. There's no, no details, this is just kind of what we did with the apartments over in the quarry, hey, what do you guys think of it? Do you like it? All the details, everything would be figured out later, but it's just to give you an opportunity to kind of feel this out. Again, the space is directly across the street and south, one, one building, there's a house there currently. It's about six-tenths of an acre.
Yeah, pretty close to that, right.
You are requesting or looking into possibly TIF?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I think in talking with the people that are working on developing this, I like the idea of it re, not revitalizing, of it being a rebirth or a beginning for Cottonwood Avenue. As we've seen on Capitol, it has gone from being somewhere that is not very busy in 2005 to being extremely busy and bustling and full of life now on Capitol. I see the same thing for Cottonwood in the future. I believe that our, our plans and our future plans kind of are geared in that direction. We feel that we want to have a nice, good downtown where people can get services. I think for someone to be able to lay their head in Heartland and have a hotel instead of dragging behind, I think this could be an outstanding thing for that. I also, there's, there's information in the packet, but also as studies have shown, extended stay is one of the only things from a hotel perspective that knocked it out of the park through COVID, because it's happening. With that.
Our last three hotels that I've built, the last three that I own, they've all been in town places, they're all extended stay. We're just finishing up the one in Oconomah, hopefully next week.
But I think, I think it could be very good for the village of Heartland. In fact, I think it could be great for the village of Heartland, I do agree that it will tighten up parking, but when you look down Cottonwood now, like tonight, it is odd with the village because it's different than other places. On the weekends, people tend to go out, on the weekdays, people want to be here. And we have people coming from all over, but that is the case. And I, if this project wasn't as far down Cottonwood, it'd be much more, it would be difficult for me to say yes without us getting more parking underground, but because of the number of spaces down Cottonwood and the municipal lots, looking at someone being within three blocks and being able to walk, I'm thinking of the venues more so than the rooms.
Yep.
That, that's what kind of brings my comfort level. I know it's going to tighten things up at certain times, but that, you know, that, that's what kind of gets me excited about the project, if it works for the village of Heartland.
I have a question, I'm sorry. My question is to chief, it's my understanding, this one, please, that in municipal lots, there is no overnight parking? Is that correct?
That's actually incorrect.
Okay.
So the only ordinance we have for overnight parking is on the streets, and that's during winter parking.
Okay, so in municipal lots, somebody could park there for a month?
Correct.
Okay.
If it's abandoned, that would fall under another ordinance, non-registered, tires are flat, issues like that, we would follow up with that, but if it's parked, we don't have any restrictions in our municipal lots at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Clarify, there's not a 24-hour one?
No.
That they have to move, okay.
Question I have, this on the first floor, you talked about retail space, what are we talking about, square footage for retail?
3,000. The, the event space is 5,000. 5,000 could handle 250 people, we have enough bathrooms on this plan for 250 people. Those are really unusual, to have that many in an event, they're just not that many to have that. Other ones that we've done, maybe once or twice a year, do we get a wedding that big? Most of them are in the 150-ish range.
Yeah, I would like to point out, and I do think it's a really kind of cool design feature.
feature, if you look at the property, it's the Yellow House on Cottonwood. The property slopes up. And what Jim's design team is proposing is to excavate out that hill, so when you come out at the event center, you're going to be down below grade. So it is going to be very private. It's going to keep it from sound getting to the neighbors.
The grade of Cottonwood, taken all the way through.
Yeah.
So the first floor would be even with that green space that's in, on the left side here.
Yeah.
What that will do is put us about 11 feet below the neighbors. And we wouldn't have things like bands or noise outside. We would have things that would go on outside, but we would not allow a band or anything like that. And all of our events in, in other places, everything shuts down at 11. We don't let any, every event is 7 to 11.
That was going to be my question regarding that outdoor event space and the direction that it's facing and neighbors and how that looks and what that.
Most likely what would happen there is that we would have an event from 7 to 11, but we'd have a wedding, that same event, they might want to do their wedding outside. That, that, I would say that's about probably half now. You know, the, the, I don't want to call it old-fashioned, but church weddings and then everybody being in a church and then everybody leaving the church and then going to another venue has really cut back. I think, and this is just a thought because of talking to people during events and stuff, it's the drunk driving. I don't know if it's cut down here, but it's on everybody's mind. I've got four kids, they're all, now 27 to 31. They never go out drinking without an Uber. They don't even think about it anymore. And that's the same thing with the hotel. Our hotels, it's not unusual to have four or five weddings in one of our other hotels on a Saturday, four or five room blocks of, you know, 10, 15, 30 rooms, and run shuttles, not even let people drive. The bride hires a shuttle and takes them to the hotel where she got the blocks. So I'm pretty sure that this, so much press about drinking and driving has driven things this way.
I have one more question.
Sure.
On the second and third floor apartments, can you tell me how many one, two-bedroom, are they all one-bedrooms?
Sure, there's, there is on each floor.
It's, it is on the sheet on 104, too.
But again, the corners, the corners on each floor are two-bedroom apartments.
Okay.
In the center of, of the front on Cottonwood is a studio, and there's one more studio by the staircase. The rest of the apartments are one-bedrooms.
I found it, thanks, Chris. I couldn't find it.
So the breakdown is eight twos. Let's do the math, two studios and a rest.
Four, four two-bedroom.
14?
Four two-bedroom.
Four two, no, eight. Four, two and two.
Correct, correct.
Eight total.
Correct.
And I think it's eight, what's 26, eight, 10, 16. 16 one-bedrooms.
Approximate square footage?
Of the whole building?
Two-bedroom unit?
Oh, they're about 1,000 to 1,100. One-bedrooms are just under 800, and studios are six-ish, maybe 580 or something like that.
Chris, this is me being naive.
That's all right.
At what point do you develop like the price range? Do you already know kind of what your target range is?
Oh, God, we have to know that before we go to the bank.
So.
So we're looking at apartments. When people talk about apartments, they may not talk to you about this because they want to say, say it's 800 bucks, so that makes it easier. We think of dollar per square foot. What can we get every month per square foot? And it's usually across the board, for suburban apartments, is a buck and a half. I just finished apartment building downtown Milwaukee on the east side. Almost all studios and one-bedrooms and a couple two-bedrooms. He gets, he's getting now, it's open, he's getting two bucks, but you'll never get that in a suburb. So a buck and a half to a buck 60, you know. What is our amenity? You know, you get the bigger complexes that have the pools and the tennis court, the dog walks and those kind of things. Our amenity is walkability. There won't be any apartment building that has the same walkability that this has. Now, who's that going to attract? It attracts an unusual customer. It attracts the very young, the ones just kids, I say kids, but the adults just out of college, 22, 28-ish, and it attracts the 55, who've given up their bigger house and have moved in. The between, we tend to not have those in apartments in this type of setting. So it's an unusual mix that you're taking the two very ends of the scope.
I do have a question. Chief Jamritz, that, that story is not a big deal for our ladder truck?
Not at all.
Okay.
One of the cons, one of the concepts when I reached out to Jim, and, and really we want to get some good feedback here, is I was traveling with my wife about four years ago, we stayed in a facility called The Flats, and it was like, they didn't have any place to check in, you could go write your room. It was like an owned Airbnb, but it was in this little walkable downtown out in Oregon. And then when I bought the Yellow House, I said to my wife, it's just such an awesome property, let's just buy it and see what happens. I got introduced to Jim through my banker and explained to him my thoughts that we really want to lean into Heartland. We want to have this facility where people can walk the downtown, go to local restaurants. It's what my, what, it's what attracted my wife and I. And I think that's one of the, the amenities as well, and I think to, to Jeff's point, can really help revitalize not only Cottonwood, but bring more people to Heartland. And I think that helps all the other establishments as well. I know that Daddie's here, and I've talked to her a little bit about it, so I'm hoping you're here for support.
I am. Exactly why I am here.
All of my other hotels are freeway chain hotels. You've all seen them, you've all stayed in them, Hamptons and Town Places, and I also have an airport hotel asleep in. I just recently opened, it's 10 weeks now, we're on our 11th week, a 25-room boutique hotel off the freeway on the river in Sheboygan. Every hotel that we have, this new little one, it is luxury, it is, it is a luxury hotel. I mean, it's got a, it's got a lobby almost twice the size of this room for a 25-room hotel. I mean, it's just furniture and, but, and it's 20-foot high. But we get better ADR in that, meaning the average daily rate in that hotel than any of our chains, and I watch them every week. It's an unusual concept, though, boutique hotels, because you draw a lot more of what they call leisure business. Two main business hotels, leisure and business. You love business because they are always there. But if you have 100 rooms, you need business to be always there, because in the winter you've got to fill some rooms. In a leisure hotel, you're trying not to do a lot of business. You will take the business, but you're not trying to fight to get the business. What you're trying to do is save your rooms for leisure. There's a big reason. Like at our hotel in, in Sheboygan, our corporate rate, like when we do Kohler, we do American Arthodontics and stuff, we get 120 bucks for a room for a night. But when we have leisure, that customer pays 165 to 195. So it's a big difference. Now, if you had empty rooms, 120 bucks is great. You know, like, our rooms at our newest town place, our rack rate, that's the rate that you see, 175 to 185, but our average daily rate is 135. That means that hotel, that particular hotel, is just killing it on business, and they're only getting leisure on Saturdays. You know, because Sunday is a dead day, no matter what hotel you own, Sunday you're, you're lucky to get 50%, most likely it's 30, because everybody's in travel or moving. So for a place like Sheboygan, has a number of hotels, they're all on the freeway. We are the only rated three-star hotel in Sheboygan. Now Kohler's in Kohler, which is next to us. Kohler's a five-star rated hotel, but their rooms are 800 to $900. And, but we outrated our little 25-room hotel, outrated Fairfield, which is a great hotel, great Marriott property, Holiday Express, a Grand Stay, you know, they were all two, two and a half stars, and when they rated us, they rated us at three. And we can't go any farther than three, because to get a higher rating in a hotel than three, you have to have a restaurant. Now, this hotel, depending on what we do with the 3,000 square foot, if it has a restaurant, and it's a good restaurant, doesn't mean you just have, you know, McDonald's in the corner, but if you have a good restaurant, you can take your ratings up to four stars. There's nobody on the freeway that's four stars. You know, so you can have the highest-rated hotel in the area.
You know, another thing that comes to mind for myself with this, even just as the discussion is going on, and I, I won't have any more after this, but it does, you know, we think about the weekends where it brings people down for revitalization of, you know, as he was just saying, restaurants, but the revitalization of, of shops and like shopping. When you have people coming for an event, if they're staying in a hotel and there's the walkability, they're not going to want to go driving around, and they go and just start walking, it is going to, I think it, it, it could spur the development in that arena as well. Not just commercial, but, but in, you know, other shops, coffee shops getting business, places, boutiques getting business, other shops that may open stores, you know, because we know that our spaces are small, but I think that it can, I think it could help.
Extended stay hotels also help, you wouldn't typically think of this, local grocery stores, because these people have nothing. You know, they come to the hotel, they've got nothing. You know, and they don't want to eat out of 20 bucks every night if they're doing extended stay. They may go out once or twice a week, but we find our extended stays eat-in probably like five nights a week. You know, so it even helps the grocery stores, the, they always forget something, so whatever you're, I, I don't even know, whatever your local CVS or Walgreens is, they get a lot of business off of this stuff. They forget a prescription, you know, they stop in and get something.
Or your local hometown.
Or your local hometown.
Right here.
If you're connected.
What is the total value estimate of the project?
Right now, and I hope this number comes down, but right now we're at 13.5 million.
The other thing I have not looked at yet, I will as this gets more serious, but there would be hotel motel tax revenue that we would get from this, so.
Doesn't that go to the chamber, too? I thought hotel taxes, some of that.
It predated everything, you had to have a tourism district items like that. We would have to create something like that.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
Hey, I just got that report. I just got that report.
Choose to give it to them.
I'm, I'm just asking, because we, with the resort up north in, in Door County, there's a lot of Chamber of Commerce stuff that goes on with the hotels up there. That's where I was asking from.
It used to go to Chamber of Commerce, now it has to be a, if you don't have a motel, hotel, you have to create a tourism board and it has to be invested into that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so for September. These are rooms that sell for 7,600 bucks. That's a 25-room hotel. The amount of money, and theirs goes to, they have a, like you call it a chamber, they have a thing there called Welcome Sheboygan. They got a big building for tourists, their tourist building. It all goes there. Sheboygan does a lot of advertising to Chicago. Probably three-quarters are advertising to Chicago. When I go through the lot, like on a Saturday, half the cars will be Illinois, half the cars will be Wisconsin, and a few Minnesota. But Illinois is a huge market to get away for a two-hour drive. This is a two-hour drive from Chicago, just to get away. Golfers, we have tons of golfers.
So with the, I think, getting the feeling, if I'm wrong, someone correct me, I don't think that anybody, whether it's a yes or a no, doesn't matter, but I think that everybody is at the place that they're at now, so I think it's about time. If someone doesn't want to send it, they can make a motion not to send it, and if they want to send it to the planning commission, they can.
I, I think it's a great thing. We need to revitalize, I hate to say it, but I think Heartland's behind the eight ball compared to communities around us, and it's time to step to the plate and get, get our competition up like that, so I'm all for it. So with that said, I'll make a motion to approve this conceptual plan and send it to the planning commission for further details, and they can hash out everything, but I think it's a, it's a great idea.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to send the, the multi-use building proposal from 221, 221 Cottonwood Avenue, the concept plan to the planning commission. I want to make one thing very clear, and then we can have discussion, because we have a motion as second on the floor, and for the, for the applicants, I want to, and I think you know. All this means, it'll come back to the village board. After a long process, you know how this goes, this does not mean this is a yes vote. This means that the village board likes the concept, likes where this is going, and thinks that this may be a very good idea for the village, so, so much so that they're going to send it to the planning commission, and then there's a lot more. I just want to make sure, sometimes people get confused with that, I want to make sure everybody knows.
I, I do, I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are we going right to planning commission, or are we going to planning commission review next week?
Next week would be a planning commission concept review, same thing.
Same as, same.
Same, same exact thing, there's a few different people. We just, the, the village board wanted to bring it forward to the village, so it's on TV, everybody in the community has seen it, they're aware of it. The paper may call, and I may get them in touch with you, just so that it isn't all of a sudden, like, so that's what I was going to ask real quick, the timeline, when are you hoping to build, when are you hoping to be done?
We're hoping for, we're hoping to dig ground in April, and open exactly a year.
Open in a year?
Yeah, it takes a year.
So, and that's why we want to do this, we just don't want to come to next March and everyone's going, where was this? That's why we do this process.
And at the same time, it lets everybody know what's going on, so no one, because it's sitting on YouTube, no one's hiding anything, no one can come and say, oh my gosh.
Correct.
You know, if they find out about it, six months from now, they're like, how come we didn't know about this? And then at least it's like, hey, we tried to do our best. But it also is a good idea in the past, and I keep saying this, but I think it's important we keep reminding, because we are pretty transparent. In the past, there's times where trustees didn't even, they, I mean, they could go and look, but it's like they weren't even told about stuff that was being sent to planning commission. It just went there and all of a sudden it came up and it had been worked on for six months, so this way, everybody knows, so now it's on the trustees that aren't on planning commission. If they want to come, you know, to voice their opinions or, or to sit and listen, they can. So everybody knows, same with the public.
Jeff has my email. If anybody's got a question, I don't even know if you're allowed to do this, but if anybody has a question, fire it off.
Well, absolutely.
I call the architects, I, I don't know everything. I know how to get money, I know how to build a building.
You and I got to talk.
When they ask me, can I do this, or can we do this, or can this be put here, I don't really know technical stuff in the, in the architectural part. I'll draw up plans and I'll tell the architect, this is what I want to see, now make it work. Now, if anybody's interested, it's hard to, this is, don't compare this hotel to, to any other hotel you've probably seen, but if you go to Sheboygan Hotels and you go to the watershed, that's the one we just opened up, look at the reviews. We have been open 70 days, and we have 55 reviews, 53 of them are five-star. And people have written long things on, on, on the relaxation of the hotel, not the noise of the freeway, because we got that, I understand it. I mean, if you go to Grafton, my hotel, you spit out the window, you are spitting on a car on the freeway. I mean, I understand that part of it, and that business guy who wants to be in, he wants to be out, but we don't get that.
Understood. No one has anything to add? I'm going to call the question. Go ahead.
I just want to say, as a resident of Heartland for 24 years downtown, I think this is an exciting concept and something that can really help Heartland move forward.
Thank you. I think it can help us a lot, too. I think this is such an untapped market. You know, I've got a guy, the guy that runs our hotels, they have a development director, and I told him we found a, this would not be managed by them, because it's too small, there's not enough money, but he, I told him we found a piece of property in Heartland. He said, no, you didn't, there's nothing there. There's nothing there because everything that ever gets sold in this town is off-market. I see sales, they were never on the market. This was off-market, meaning that it never went for sale.
No call, God's country for nothing.
He knows a guy, and that guy knew me, and then that's how we found out about it.
You guys ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you, guys.
Thanks very much.
Next item on the agenda is discussion of park and recreation board motions regarding pickleball and parking.
This came from the park board, which actually it came a couple weeks ago to the village board, they kicked it back to the park board. The discussion is twofold. There's a pickleball court, and then there's also a discussion about the parking lot. I'm going to start with the pickleball court. So what we're proposing to do is put four pickleball courts east of the driveway going into Nixon Park, so that'll be in between the, the baseball diamond and the driveway. And then what we want to do is convert the existing two tennis courts. It'll stay one tennis court with two pickleball painted over the top of it. with two pickleball painted over the top of it, and then we're going to shorten the fence up, and it'll still hold an extra two pickleball courts. So ultimately Nixon Park would turn into eight pickleball courts. And this would be for a price tag of 156,714 dollars, but if you recall, this pickleball court is something we don't have in the village of Heartland, so this could all be funded by impact fees. And impact fees are paid by developers coming to the community of bringing their development into Heartland, and we have seven years to spend it, otherwise it needs to be kicked back to the developers.
We'll spend it.
So, but part two of this discussion is the parking lot. We initially, last year, we put in the CIP budget to redo the lower portion of the parking lot in the two driveway, in the driveway coming out to Park Street. That took it from 50 parking spots to 65, and through the village board, they asked to kick it back to the park board, because they wanted to see more parking for big events. So we had a design, as you all should have, coming up the, I'm coming from the pond up the parking lots, I mean, up the main parking lot, up the road, there, over to the left towards the splash pad, we made a, created a little parking lot that would hold 12 parking stalls. We figured that'll be nice for the, the families bringing their kids to the splash pad. Coming out of there, then you can go to the northeast, there'll be a stop sign, and then coming towards park again. We shortened up the tennis courts, so where the tennis courts were shortened up, we're going to add 16 parking spaces. And then if you go a little further, T-ball field's going to get moved from the existing position over to the east side, and then we put 12 parking spots over there. So that'll come out to, if you want to go with this route, it'll bring it up from 65 parking spots to 107 parking spots in Nixon Park. That, that being said, and with the path that goes around from the train trestle all the way around the pond to Nick's, I'm sorry, to Park Street, that took a beating when we put the bollards in, we thought the ground was a little more stable, it's not, so we're suggesting that we repave that at this time and not run trucks over it after we paved the parking lot.
What part Dave?
I'm sorry?
What part, part needs repaving? Go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Where, where, where's the repaving needed?
On this path, I was stating.
The whole thing, or just part of it?
Just a part around the pond, from the railroad trestle.
Okay.
All around the pond, and then out to Park Street, not, not but around the fine art center. Because that's fairly new when we built the fine art center. So, originally, the, the parking lot alone, with the handicap spots, the ADA spots and the garbage surround, and the driveway coming out, we budgeted through the CIP was 375,000 dollars. Adding these extra spots to take it to 107, and to do the path around the pond, it comes out to 466,959 dollars, so it's an increase of 92,000, and you double your parking. So staff is recommending to do that, go that route, because both boards asked for more parking in that park, and this would definitely curtail that.
So this is not a, like a motion item, we just have it on here letting you know, we are going to put this in the budget. In November, if you guys don't want certain things, or it just, the aspect that are nice is it gives parking where everyone, right now, parking is, people are having to walk across the street, there are a lot of people afraid of somebody's eventually going to get hit. We're now giving a location to the splash pad where people can park and walk up. You'll see just to the east of the splash pad, I'm circling it now, that is a potential future concession bathroom kind of joint facility, because the bathroom right now is way over here, and you have to go across the roads. And this will also, you'll see some speed bumps in there, and there's talk about putting some of the stones back off of the parking, correct?
That is correct.
Just so, currently we have an issue with people who want to get exercise, not wanting to park and walk, so. So we're trying to deter them, there's plenty of parking here. This will also keep that old T-ball facility, that'll keep it open, and cover yours for like Bellicane and other large bands. Nice green space to hold those concerts and have the music playing towards the train tracks. This will not impact seating for the fireworks, everything will be open, we can remove those fences in between the pickleball courts, I believe you guys said.
That is correct.
So, we're not tearing down a bunch of trees, we're, really it's just, we're using, this used to be a volleyball court where that is, and it's nothing right now, and when we all walked it after a, a board meeting, we were kind of surprised, it's just such a good location for parking, so.
So if anybody has questions, feel free to reach out to me.
Ask you a question now?
Absolutely.
The parking coming up from the main parking lot, if you're heading east?
Yep.
That's by the splash pad?
Correct.
Isn't that on a hill, that's a hill there?
No, that, that's pretty flat up on top there, the, the incline is right when you come out of the parking lot, and then it levels off.
And are we moving the T-ball from the west side to the east side?
We are, that is not going to get done this year, DPW will do that, and with the pickleball courts, in the situation where they're, where they're laid out now, we're actually going to have to move that pickle, that T-ball field up on top of the hill, just to the northeast of where it's located right now.
Why are we moving it?
Make more green space around where all of our activities are.
So, it's, it's right here currently, correct?
Correct.
So.
There's, there's no hurry to do it, but either next year or the following year, it's going to get moved up on top of the hill northeast of where the orange mark is. We laid out the pickleball court, and it just, we want 120 feet from home base to the outfield for T-ballers, they don't normally hit that far, but we just figured that if they're running, we don't want them to run into a fence or anything, so we're going to move that, and there's plenty of room behind the baseball diamond, Mr. Hellquist came out there and laid it out with us.
So we're moving it just to give them more space, or more area?
Yeah.
Let me, and also I'm going to, the, one of the reasons why they're putting the parking over there is so that the kids won't have to cross the street, cross the walk, so they can just go right to the T-ball field. And that's why there's parking on that side.
Whatever happened to the monument that was going to go in there? I, I mean, I can't even remember how long ago we were going to put a monument, like, right? Okay, so that's history.
They stopped that once the Legion did their memorial.
Okay, so that's, that's not, okay.
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
We still do have a memorial up there, just not a new one.
Correct.
Right.
Mr. Felton, the future proposed restrooms and, and concession, while the road's ripped up, I see that there's a proposal to run that lateral, that's included in this as well?
That is, nope, that is coming out of our utility projects for the 2023 project, I put it in there. It's about $8,000 to run that sanitary sewer line.
Dave, as far as the spacing of the parking spots, how wide are they?
They're nine by twenties, that's our standard parking spot for the village of Heartland, nine foot wide by 20 deep.
It's nothing more frustrating than having parking spots where you're getting door dings, and you're, you're packing them in so tight that, yeah, you want quantity, but you don't want bad quality spots to park.
Right, exactly.
All the new parking spaces down below, buses will be able to get through there, they, they, Rukert and Milkie ran that, everybody will still be able to get through that, so.
Dave, was the 107 spots including the current handicap spots by the other bathroom?
That.
Or is that three more?
Nope, excluding them.
Okay.
The two by the triangle here, yes, so it'd be 109 with them. You can see the cutoff line, we're not going that far.
Right.
So I just put in the new paving area, in the new paving area from that dotted line from the triangle bathroom, with the road going out and the parking lot, there's 107 spots. Five of them will be ADA.
I've, I've gone over and talked to some of the current pickleball players, and told them that we've had, we have two new ones over at Penbrook that they could go out and try, and the response was quite mixed. So, they said that Nixon was centrally located, and then they liked it, it was so easy to get to, whereas Penbrook was difficult to find, and, and was in Hart Ridge, and you can take that for whatever it's worth, but. So I think this is a much needed, I mean, pickleball is blowing up right now, so this is something that I think our residents would really use.
So somebody asked me if, if pickleball was a fad and if it ever went away, we could convert them, four pickleball courts into a tennis court on the east side of the path, on the road.
Well, there's also now professional pickleball going on.
I don't believe in Heartland.
Well, not, not in Heartland yet, but I think, Dave, you're past the prime to play, but, so.
We can also change.
I looked up when pickleball started, 1965.
Holy cow.
I'm like, really?
I guess it's not a fad.
I guess not.
And where's the basketball court?
It's at Harkbrook and Juliet.
It's in Mary Hill.
Cultusack, right?
It's, this item's on here for, it says discussion on park and recreation board motions, it was only on here for discussion, is that correct?
That is correct, we're just putting this in the budget, which you guys will approve at a later date. If you approved it now, you're approving it again in like a month, so.
Right, okay.
Thanks for your work on that, appreciate it, Dave.
Good. That completes that discussion, we'll move on to the next item. Now we have a discussion and consideration of building needs assessment request for proposals.
All right, we did hear back on our request for proposal process, or RFP. We sent that out for our building needs assessment for the police department, fire department, and our village hall facilities. We had four firms respond to our RFP process, those are FGM Architects, or FGMA, Zimmerman, OPN Architects, and then Cooney Architects. They all provided the necessary qualification documents that were requested in the proposal. They all seem to have very good qualifications. Price point wise, the FGMA was at 24,500 dollars. Now, they did state if we were to do the building needs assessment through them, and then choose an option to build, they would take 5,500 dollars, no, I'm sorry, 7,500 dollars off any schematic design for any future building needs. So they would have to be selected for this analysis, and then have to be selected for the actual architectural concept design. And then they would apply that, so that's not just automatic, but that is in there, so that you're comparing apples to apples on price points. So that has a potential, if the credit is applied, and they are the selected firm for both this, and then if we were to move forward with the architectural concept design, it could come down to 17,500 dollars, because that credit would come towards, come back on the architectural concept design piece. Zimmerman did something very similar, their total was 19,240 dollars. And then they reached back to me after I submitted this memo, and emailed me saying that they did not put it in, but they would do also some credits. They have two different credit tiers, one would be an onsite credit, so let's say we chose to do like a remodel of this current building, and it was onsite here, that's something they can credit 5,100 dollars towards. So then that total, again, they'd have to be selected for both this analysis, and then any type of concept design architectural on the project. That would bring that cost down to 14,140. And then if it was an offsite, like a new location, and we were building from scratch, they can only do 2,100 dollars, and the theory behind that is they'd have some, some of this assessment time on their concept designs would happen here, and they would be able to be efficient on the concept design for a construction project. But if it were to occur offsite, they still would have some costs, so the credit would be different between onsite, offsite. So that offsite would be 2,100 dollars, and again, bringing it down to 17,140, so very comparable when you talk credits with FGMA and Zimmerman, but all in like total cost structure, like what we would actually be paying for the bill. Credits aside, Zimmerman would obviously be a little cheaper of an option. And then OPN was at 32,360 dollars, and they gave a high reimbursable cost of 1,200 dollars. They don't believe it would cost that much, that's for like mailing, office supplies, any other actual cost type things they would incur during this assessment, but they always wanted to go high and be under, then go low and be over. So, again, using their estimates for both, be about 33,560 dollars. And then Cooney is 31,860 dollars. And FGMA is out of Milwaukee County area, south side of Milwaukee County, Zimmerman Milwaukee area, OPN Madison area, and then Cooney is, I believe, like Racine or Kenosha County. And I've actually personally done work with Zimmerman in the past, and have had positive experiences. And then I've know several of my counterparts as chiefs, who've done work with FGMA, and have had very pleasant experiences with them as well. OPN, I don't know anyone personally who's used them, or Cooney as well. So we have a couple of different options, we can select a firm based off the information we just kind of went over, and that you were able to review. We can try to narrow the field down to who we think is the top one or two contenders, and do anything further that we feel necessary, we can do a more in-depth reference check than just what was provided to ensure quality product and services, and then we can also, if, if needed, we can bring them in for an actual face-to-face interview to make sure there's a comfort level moving forward. And then obviously, we can always choose an option of, we don't feel we want to do this at this time, and not move forward. My recommendation would be, let's narrow the field, I think we have two firms that have very good qualifications that I'm familiar with, they're both locally here in the area, and their price points are considerably cheaper than the other two. And that would be FGMA and then Zimmerman, and I can perform a more in-depth reference check. And then if the board does decide if we want to do an interview, probably be more than happy to set that up as well. But my recommendation would be either select one based off what your comfort level is here, or we can narrow it down and actually do a little more deeper dive into the ones we're, we're seriously considering. And now, remember with this, we brought this to you guys a couple of months ago, because our facilities are aging, we're running out of space. So it's trying to figure out just what are some options here for the village. All of them are going to do that same work, throw out that credit thing, because even if we go with one, when we go to, if we say, okay, we're going to go forward with this, we're going to have all of them re-quoted, you know what I mean? Just because you get a credit doesn't, don't put a ton of weight in that, because we may get this needs analysis back, and everybody might say, that's 8 million dollars, to whatever it is, we don't know. Yeah, I, I agree with Tor, and I think both those companies are very reputable, we know Zimmerman, they did the library. I believe a couple of, Public Works probably worked with them when they were doing the library. And, and I would even double down on what the village manager is saying, is if we put this back out, Zimmerman may do this assessment, and then we go out for conceptual design and architectural, and another firm can get selected, so then that credit's lost on us, so. It's almost like the perfect storm to have both of those things apply, to get selected for both, and then take advantage of that credit. And as you also recall, we kind of talked about this years ago, it kind of didn't go very far. And then it came back up when we talked about impact fee study, that Rukert and Milkie was going to do that impact study, so based on growth, police and fire, if we add additional square footage or additional size to our existing facility, that additional size can be paid for through that impact fee. But it's got to be growth, it can't be, if we're 10,000 square feet, and they say, build a new facility for 10,000 square feet, that wouldn't apply for us, if we're 10,000, and they say go 15, then that 5,000 part can be subsidized or paid through that impact fee. And Rukert and Milkie, once we have direction here, will finalize that impact fee study.
I, my opinion would be, I mean, I go along with what the chief said. In fact, I'll be honest with you. I mean, I'd be willing to vote and take the vote to select Zimmerman now, only because we've worked with them already. They're local, they've done some outstanding civil projects. That doesn't mean we have to. I'm just saying I'm ready to go there right now. So I would be either that or narrowing it down, but I would definitely be ready to go with them. They've already done work with the village by doing the library, which turned out beautiful. So just giving you guys, letting you guys know where I'm at. And, and it's substantially cheaper, so it seems like they're, they know who they're dealing with, so they're coming to the table not to hope to get a little extra. Not saying the other companies are, but they're substantially lower where they're coming to play. And obviously, I always respect that because it doesn't waste any work.
And I, I would add this. On that note, Zimmerman and FGMA both did come out and did actual walkthroughs before they submitted to their RFP. And I would be very comfortable telling you that I've talked to very close contacts, not just acquaintances, that have worked with both firms and had very successful projects. And then, like I said, I've worked with Zimmerman at the county level for the county courthouse reconstruction, which was a massive project. And they did a very good job staying on top of things for, till the time I left there.
I, I rank them as well. And FGMA and Zimmerman was one and two. You can't go wrong with a guy named as cat Taco Cat. So I don't know if you guys anybody saw that? Huh? You didn't see it?
No.
Fun fact, under Michael Willams, Michael named his cat Taco because Taco Cat spelled backwards is Taco Cat. So I'm just saying.
Making sure you're reading that.
Yeah. Who says I don't read my stuff?
I agree. I'd pick Zimmerman and FGMA as well, but I, I kind of feel that the due or due diligence, we should probably narrow it down to those two, do a little further in-depth analysis and get feedback. And then from there, make a decision.
They both have great references, a lot of references.
And again, this doesn't mean we're, we're doing anything. We're just trying to see what is viable, what are some options, and what are the costs associated with that, so.
And this assessment would obviously take in our growth over the next several decades as well and prepare us for that.
No one's obligated to, but it would take a motion to kind of send chief to, well, I think multiple village personnel, correct, to look, to help with looking into this, our chiefs. And I, I don't know who's exactly, I don't know who's all going to be involved, but it would take a motion to set forth saying, okay, look deeper and, and get that narrowing down, or, or whatever the motion is.
I'll make a motion then to have police chief look deeper into it and narrow it down. And I, I'm kind of leaning, like I said, for Zimmerman and FGMA and get a little more details and then come back.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to get it narrowed down to those two companies. FGM Architects and Zimmerman Architectural Studios out of the four, to narrow it down to those two. I do have a comment for the, so who's, are all of you involved to some extent in kind of giving some opinion on this? Fire chief, police chief, village manager?
Currently, no.
So I'm Ben, the point of contact for the RFP study.
Yep.
But whatever we move forward with, this is going to be an entire village project.
Right.
So they will talk to Director Felkner in regards to our building statuses. They'll be talking to the fire chief about fire buildings. They'll be talking to me about police, be talking to the village manager and other staff about village hall. So this will just not, they'll, they'll be coming, doing interviews, looking at facilities, taking measurements, checking areas. Some predefined areas obviously would be any village-owned sites. One that would come to mind is the site on Cottonwood and Lindenwood. Then you also have this site here for any type of remodel work. So those are probably your two biggest options that they are going to study the most in depth. But that will be after interviews with all staff and up to and including even the village board.
Does anybody on staff that's here now have any problems with the two companies that it looks like this board is going to narrow it down to?
Nope.
Anybody have any reservations? No?
No.
Anybody have any other comments? Call in the question. Prove to move forward with those two companies and we'll narrow it down even further in the future. The motion is to proceed with FMG, I'm sorry, FGM and Zimmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on our agenda would be appointments to committees, if there was any, by the village president. There is none at this time. So we can move on past that item.
We'll move that to December, November, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Announcements.
I had just a couple of things I wanted to update the, the board on and the community at large. But in exciting news, Officer Bell was just invited to receive an award for his assistance provided in the Walkshop Christmas Parade incident. So City of Walkshop Police Department will be holding a very large award ceremony for the, I think it's 50 or 40-some police agencies that responded to provide assistance during that incident. So they'll be doing that on November 14th. And Officer Bell and myself will be in attendance to receive that award. I unfortunately won't be at our budget village board meeting. So if you do have questions up in front of the budget for the police, please send them my way and I will definitely make sure they're answered for you before that meeting. Or Deputy Chief Calera and Lieutenant DeBarge will be at that November 14th meeting and will have that information as well. And then our SWAT team, our suburban critical incident team, we're in the process of developing a technologic, a technology resource group. Their main area of responsibility will be mostly drone-type resources. We actually just received an $18,000 indoor drone unit from a company. And we got it for nothing, just the cost of licensing software and the data plan, which it came out to $1,800 for the year. So we got it for 18,000 for 1,800. And all we had to do is shoot a little SWAT team promotional video for them and we got the unit. So we've been working closely with them. So we got a great resource there. And we're also looking to add some other exterior and interior drone capabilities. There's some of the agencies that already have some drone capabilities that are within the SCIT, but this now brings all nine of our communities up to speed with the current trends on any drone capable missions, whether it be critical incident or search and rescue, or even pre-event planning where we can put a drone up in the air and watch what's going on from up in the sky. So it brings a lot of different technology and resources to us in a very cost-efficient matter. And then I also was selected from our State Chiefs Association to participate in a statewide mental health committee. I think all of you have heard me vent about our mental health process in the state of Wisconsin and the inefficiency it brings to not only the people in crisis, but to the police departments responding to these incidents, especially when it comes to medical clearance of any subject going into a mental health facility. They could be days long and that can be officers sitting in a hospital for days long, very inefficient, very cost-ineffective. So we've been working, trying to make that process more efficient. And we actually just met with Winnebago Mental Health, which is the only statewide hospital that takes a lot of our emergency detentions. And we're, we're, we're seeing progress in their mental health and medical clearance procedures. So hopefully that will materialize into a much more efficient process. I've been down this road before and I've been unlucky. We hear a lot of great things, but we're starting to actually see some action and some efficiencies being brought forward. So that's definitely a good for us and can make a very inefficient process for someone in need, in crisis, much more efficient. So very hopeful with that. And it's going very well.
Thank you, chief. Chief?
So our pancake breakfast this weekend, we serve 487 breakfasts out. Right now it's looking at, we're going to probably gross right around $6,000 for the association for that. Our call volume, again, is, is staying up there. We are 79 calls over last year's record-setting call volume. So we just keep answering the calls for him.
Thank you, chief.
So I want to relay, I took the vandalism report to the park board, last park board meeting. In 2021, we only had two times that we had to report an incident, a vandalism incident to PD. In 2022 this year, so far, there's already 13 calls in the parks registered. That being said, this weekend, we just had one of our water towers tagged. They spray painted the base of our water towers and toilet papered our trees off of Highway K.
That drone.
Thank you.
I will, I will add to that, those 13 incidents that happened prior to the water tower, those were mostly in our parks. And there was some graffiti and then also some like baseball equipment that went missing. We were able to identify two suspects and cite them for those offenses. So good news on that end. And then they abruptly, obviously, came to an end.
I can't ask a question. I'll ask you after.
Real quick, this week, we are doing our interviews for the rec director. We have five or six of us that will be doing those, starting tomorrow, ending Friday. We're going to see how the interviews go before we get in a process, but I'll keep you guys posted with how it goes.
Heartland Lights, December 2nd, that is a Friday. And so put it on your calendars, December 2nd. Also this year, happily, we will be having the Holiday Train back, or I should say they'll be coming. We would always accept them. We didn't shut down too much. But the Holiday Train will be coming back so everybody can gear up to get ready to pack, to fill the booths, I'm guessing, and do all the different, everybody really gets into this. So we'll kind of collect as much food and money as we can to help our food pantries. And hopefully, a lot of people will come to welcome the train in. That'll be fun. Hopefully, a lot of people will come down for Heartland Lights. I have a feeling the tree's going to look beautiful this year. I know they're really trying to go the distance with that. So it's really going to be lit up. That is on, Holiday Train is on the 9th of December. So Heartland Lights, Friday 12/2, and then Friday 12/9 is the train. I do want to say announcements for pancake breakfast. I'm very sorry that I did not make it, but I am happy to hear so many people came and that it was, I mean, it's my loss that I didn't make it over there. And I am very sorry I wasn't able to get over there, but I hope that people continue to support. And anybody that's ever looking to donate money, feel free to. I'll contact the fire department. They'll tell you where you can make that check out to. And you can help the fire department out. For this board, we have some members that are new or here for less than a year. And even, it's for everybody. It doesn't matter that it's just been less than a year. If you are not receiving the municipality, please let Ryan or Darlene know. The municipality is a magazine that comes from the League of Municipalities. If you have not completed, there's one of you that this doesn't apply to. You have until November 30th. If you have not completed the training that was on the jump drive for the sexual harassment and anti-retaliation, please get that done. We had said as a board, we wanted to get that done by September 30th. So anybody that hasn't gotten that done, please get it done by the time the next board meeting is. Also, with a focus on the League of Municipalities, with so many people not knowing for sure what resources are at their fingertips, if anybody doesn't have a book of Robert Truel's Order or the handbook from the League of Municipalities, you can contact Darlene. She's always really good about it. She'll get that ordered up for you. All of you are already on as a member. The village is a member. The reason that I stress that is in those books, there's also workshops, there's online webinars. There's lots of different things that you can, you can look into that really help guide, get a lot of questions answered. I really mean that. I mean, it can be from topics about if you want to learn about roads, to topics about how you want to learn how it's supposed to work on a village board and being a trustee. So I just really want to stress that for everybody up here, that it is, those, those resources are there for you. And at any given time, you can contact Darlene or Ryan. Ryan will usually shoot you over to Darlene because she handles a lot of that. But for league and any resources that are available, please contact her. She will let you know. And especially for those of you, if you haven't been given the material, we'll get it ordered up for you, right? So, I don't have any other announcements, other than I guess we're, we are looking into, I don't have an answer for you yet, but we are looking into what we can do about herd management when it comes to deer. It may be nothing we can do, but we're looking into it.
Question that we adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned.